All I had on there that was anything personal was the email account.
Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Would everybody please rise for the prayer and the flag salute? Curtis, will you lead us in prayer?
Yes. Let's pray. Dear Jesus, please bless everyone, forgive everyone for all their sins. Please bless this body, this city, these people, the employees and staff, elected officials, do your work, Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one is a consent docket, A through G, and I would like to add on item E, a motion to add the alternate one reading area to item E, which would make this the total four hundred nine thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents to add the reading area.
I second that. Mr. Mayor.
Will you explain the reading area? Is this a reading area at the playground?
Yes.
Okay.
It was in the original plans and then, for some reason, removed, but because the playground bid came eight thousand dollars under budget and we have, I believe, a forty thousand dollar contingency fund, and we were told that the entire project of the library could be coming in about six hundred thousand dollars under budget. We wanted to add this so that we had the full playground that was originally planned and desired.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question on item F.
Okay.
And I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but I read the printout on it. It's talking about the nine-one-one fee going to just those that have a landline. Landlines are becoming an item of the past and are falling rapidly out of favor. Is there any talk or attention to getting some of that revenue from cellphones? Or how does this work? Help me to understand this.
This goes through ACOG, I believe.
Through ACOG? Yeah, I am not sure.
I don't know either.
I believe this goes through ACOG and it's a nine-one-one fee that's regulated through them since they carry the nine-one-one franchise, basically. It gets paid through them and it does also encompass the cellphones, I believe. But yearly, you have to set this resolution and approve it so that they can get the funding, you know, from the state for this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent docket as amended.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is a special presentation by Marcia Faisal, President of the Bethany Improvement Foundation, and her entourage.
Yes. This is the Bethany... Is this on? We're the Bethany Improvement Foundation and this is members of the board and we have a special guest, Barbara Snotty. Barbara is a member of the Berchler Foundation and without the money that we receive from the Berchler Foundation, we wouldn't be able to give this gift tonight. The Bethany Improvement Foundation... Am I hiding you all? Okay. The Bethany Improvement Foundation is a charitable organization in Bethany and we exist to do community projects and that's how we raise our money. We did get gifts from the Berchler Foundation, I believe that. And some of the things that we've done that you might know about are the murals in the downtown Bethany area. We provide half of a grant for the places that want to do a mural and we're getting ready to have a new mural put up. It's already been approved and they'll start painting on it pretty soon. And we also are in charge of the Bethany Sixty-Six Festival that Ted will talk about in a minute. And the biggest thing that we did was the bond issue for the library. We paid for all the publicity for the bond issue. And again, the Berchler Foundation helped pay for that. Then another late thing that we've done, not late, another thing we've done lately is the brackets on the signs around town, the light posts. You might have noticed them. Right now, they have blue signs up and they say, "Come to the Bethany Sixty-Six Festival", which will be next week. I have a check here from us for the artwork that is going to go inside of the new library. The check is for fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and that's in addition to two thousand dollars that we pay five hundred to each artist when they submitted their proposal for the artwork that we did for the... It's going to be on the outside and the inside. We gave each one of the artists five hundred dollars to come up with their design and their prototype. And I think you might remember at an earlier meeting this year, you saw the prototypes. We brought them and showed them. So I'd like to present this check. To whom do I give it? The mayor, I suppose? Well, you have to turn it in. Can't you just take it? So, on behalf of the Bethany Improvement Foundation and the Berchler Foundation, we would like to give you that.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And now we have one more comment.
Thank you. Coming up, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday is, I think it's our eighth annual Bethany Sixty-Six Festival that we have in downtown Bethany and we kind of mark the calendar with it just being Memorial Weekend usually, but weather permitting, it will go all day long, you know, rather from ten to four. But we have car shows, sometimes bike shows. There's local entertainment that comes out, but it's usually a... You know, I guess it's become kind of a precursor to the Family Fun Festival. They usually have, you know, a month or so later, so...
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, so...
Yeah, no tornadoes, but otherwise we'll be there.
But I hope you guys can come out, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item three is in consideration and possible approval to authorize the Park Recreation and Trees Board to solicit proposals for creating a Parks Master Plan. Do we have a report or anything?
So the Parks Board has been working tirelessly to kind of decide what we want to do with the thirteen parks that we currently have in Bethany. If you weren't aware, we have thirteen parks and that's quite a lot for a group to decide what to do with each one, but it provides a fantastic opportunity for the city with those thirteen parks to really be able to do something that stands out and sets us apart from, say, Oklahoma City or Mustang or Yukon. And so the board is very interested in getting help and kind of finding out what we can do to make those thirteen parks unique and special to us and what that is going to take. So they are requesting permission to go out for proposals only right now to see what the cost might be for someone to come in and do a master plan for our thirteen parks. I don't think we've ever had that here. I think it might be an important thing we do next along with the comprehensive plan and some of the other steps we're taking in community development. They are wanting to see someone come in, go and look at all thirteen parks, assess all thirteen parks, hold several community meetings with the community to see what the community wants for those parks. We'd really like to get some demographic information from the areas that those parks are in to see who is utilizing them or is the population even there to utilize those parks? Maybe it better serves to be a dog park than have playground equipment. So they've kind of laid out in this RFP what they're wanting and are wanting permission to go forward and at least request proposals and look at them and go from there.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of comments. One is, I know it says here that they are known as the Bethany Board. I would put in there the Bethany Parks Board just because we have several boards and I think that would get confusing. And then the other comment in section four, it asks for three and then in parentheses it says ten copies, so just clarify those.
But they are the... Like in item three says Parks Recreation and Tree Board, right? That's their title.
Yeah, otherwise known as the Bethany Board.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Have other cities done this?
Yes, this is a pretty common thing for other cities to do.
And then we follow this plan, we get the RFP. Do you have an estimate as to how much that might be or do you know?
It's going to depend. I mean, these kind of plans can go anywhere from... I've talked to several companies already that are looking at perhaps ten thousand based on what we want. Some towns we've talked to, like Oklahoma City and other larger towns, have spent as much on their park plans almost as a comprehensive plan. Obviously, we are not wanting to spend that much. We're really just kind of wanting not such a robust master plan like some of those other cities have, just really the guidance and a plan laid out for us and a timeline and some costs associated with that as well. So we're hoping no more than, I would say, ten thousand dollars, but we'll see how the proposals come in.
So in the timeline on this is, we send out the RFP, we get a deadline and then we'll have something in the next four to six weeks?
I think it is a twenty-one day... Twenty-one days? Yes, within the next month and a half or so. Yes, sir. And then I would imagine the board would look at those and go through those and present back to you who they want to move forward with.
Is there anybody here from the Parks Committee?
Not today.
Just an additional comment. As I've been on the council over the last three or four years, it seems that every time we talk about parks, we say, "Well, they each have to have a swing. They each have to have a... You know, they each have to have all the same equipment." And that isn't really what parks do anymore. You might have a dog park and another one might be, well, like the park we're going to have with the library, which is an all abilities park, and they serve different purposes. So this might help us delineate the purposes for the various parks and then we can go forward with designing them accordingly. So I appreciate planning.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve item number three on the agenda related to...
I would... I accept your motion, but I want to make a comment before I ask for a second.
With all due respect, I think you're entitled to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with you, Dr. Harris, and I, for one, would really like to see, after looking at several of these parks and driving around one day with some staff, that I believe that it is long overdue to do something in Garrison Park. And I could see, I know that we gave children from Apollo Schools, I think it was last summer, Ripper Park Swimming Pool passes. However, a lot of those kids would have to be able to walk from that side of town to the park and I believe a splash pad in Garrison Park, that there's a perfect spot for that and it would be a great addition to that park. That would be something that the children on that side of town would absolutely love. So I'd love to see something like that talked about whenever we're doing this planning thing.
Yes, sir. We will most definitely mention that and put that in our plan and our vision, for sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I've talked to Amanda about a possible park in conjunction with Bethany Public Schools in Ward Two and I would hope that that would be included as well. And I've talked to several... Excuse me, several members of the city council and hopefully we can put that into play if that's acceptable.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
The next five items are proposed executive sessions. Discussion for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bethany and the FOP Lodge One Sixty-One. Item five is the discussion for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bethany and the IAFF Local Two Zero Eight Five. Item six is discussion of terms of employment agreement with benefits, responsibilities, and terms of employment for Janet Smith as the city manager of Bethany. Item seven is discussion and update for attorneys concerning pending legal action and claims against responsible parties concerning contamination of public water supply of the City of Bethany. Item eight is consideration and possible action to enter into executive session to discuss pending claims of a possible adverse work environment. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. We shall return.
Now the other one.
The painter, yes.
What's his name? I can't remember, but earmark that for him because that's what that's for.
Obviously, we are... Most of us are out of executive session. No action was taken. We have a quorum, so we will go ahead and get started. Item nine is consideration and possible approval to have David Davis prepare the employment agreement for Janet Smith, the city manager. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item ten is consideration of possible approval of service agreement with Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc. for engineering and related services pertaining to methods for remediation of water well pollution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item eleven is consideration of issues addressed in executive session including possible vote to retain outside legal counsel for Margaret Love to assist in this process. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item twelve is called to the public. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council? No one wishing to do so. Item thirteen is the city attorney's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that for personal reasons, I found it necessary to resign my position as city attorney to be effective January the fourth. I'm June fourth. I'm sorry.
Good, January.
No, you said January.
June fourth. But I've been here a long time, enjoyed all my time here and I like to feel I've accomplished some things here and I feel certain that you'll find the right person to go forward another century or so.
Well, Mr. Davis, you will be greatly missed.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all that you've given to the City of Bethany and our citizens. Item fourteen is the city manager's report.
Since this is my first council, I'll just say that I'm very happy to be working with the City of Bethany.
Since this is my first meeting here, obviously, but I'd just like to say that I'm very thankful to be a city manager and that the council have decided that they want to work with me and I'm looking forward to a long time of a good working relationship and so thank you for inviting me to be your city manager.
Thanks for being here. Item fifteen is the council members' announcements, comments, and proposals. This evening, let's start down with Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One topic that has been brought forward to me by a concerned citizen who just happens to be my father, Arthur Palmer. There's a concern related to the water conservation policy. There is a... The requirement says odd and even, but I don't know if that's applicable to those residents who have a sprinkler system where it's moderated by like Monday, Wednesday, Friday as opposed to odd and even. Is there any way we can make a change to have the same result but have it related to the days of the week as opposed to whether it's odd or even? I think that for those who do have sprinkler systems, it's easier and it's set up that way. It's not set up on an odd-even. It's set up on a three-day alternating date, which I think would be a reasonable request and something that we should look into. I don't have a sprinkler system and I'm just happy when it rains, but for those who do, I think it's a consideration that we need to consider and see if we can accommodate that need. With that in mind, I'm sorry to hear that Mr. Davis is going to leave us. I appreciate all of the guidance and information and the opportunity I've had to work with you in every capacity. You're a professional and your reputation is excellent in the community and you will be sorely missed. Janet, welcome to Bethany. Thank you for being here. I'm excited that we can start working together on a lot of different projects and I think you have a staff that can help you do that and I'm excited to see where we go. And with that, I'll... All right, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
I will echo all of that and just ask that, David, you download your brain somewhere so we have all of that memory that we rely on so heavily. Thank you for the job that you have done for Bethany and welcome, Janet. It's great to have another woman on the horseshoe, but welcome as our new city manager as soon as the contract is signed and we really appreciate that. And again, to the Bethany Improvement Foundation and the Berchler Foundation. Thank you for the donation for the library interior artwork and look forward to the Bethany Sixty-Six Festival, which is always on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend in downtown Bethany.
Mr. Todd?
I want to give my sad commentary on Mr. Davis leaving. It's... How long have you been here? Thirty years or something like that?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Oh, geez, thanks. Well, I've been hooked up with the city of one way or another for thirty of those and you've always given me very sound advice and I really appreciate it. And I'm going to personally miss you a great deal. The city is going to be in bad shape without you.
Everybody's replaceable. By the way, I was twelve when I started.
We're going to miss you.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I echo what they said. Everybody said about David Davis, he's represented me personally, professionally, publicly at hearings and courts and trials and tribulations and haven't lost yet. So he will be missed. Janet, you're more than welcome. We are so glad you're here. Anything you need, we're here for you. You always have a... We'll have your back, don't worry about that. Tremendously sad note. Long-term resident, Bill English and the English family. Bill English passed away, his son's Billy English, and they've had Bethany Plumbing for a hundred years? How long they had Bethany Plumbing? A long time.
Since nineteen forty-seven.
Shirey Plumbing, did they... Shirey started before...
Oh, I predate him quite a bit.
Yeah. Well, he passed away and he was a good guy. He goes... He's one of the guys you saw everywhere you went back in the day. You rode your bicycle to Tri-City or to GTNY or to Bowman's Drug or Big Ed's or Westwood Theater, anywhere you went around here. And Billy has lost his daughter, his mother, and now his father. So he needs your prayers. That's all he got.
Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say welcome, City Manager Smith. Thank you. I do hope that we can actually plan a meet and greet reception for your arrival here, maybe in June with all of the former and current citizen involved boards to be invited to that. I'd like to see that. Also on that note, I would like, for a clean start, I would like to see a transitional financial audit for all of the city. I'd like to see that, the possibility of that. The Fourth of July, we're getting very close and I don't know... I haven't heard of any plans, anyone, taking over. It seems to me like we're getting down to it's either we're going to have to put it back on staff or we're going to have to cancel it unless you have something in mind, so...
We shot an interview and it's a video and I've announced it a couple of times that Justin Peck is the committee chair and Randy Lunstra is a part of that and they are trying to gather a committee to take that on because the city staff... I mean, we've got a lot of work to do. We've got streets that we've got to do and sidewalks and all kinds of stuff, so preparing a one-day event is difficult for them to do. So that is, if anybody wants to be a part of that, they can contact Randy Lunstra or Justin Peck.
Very good. And thank you, City Attorney Mr. Davis, for your years of service. That is all.
And on another note, we actually have discussed the audit and so that will be happening, so...
Very good.
My friend, Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. When I think of Mr. Davis, I think of an old commercial I used to hear. When EF Hutton talks, people listen. And Mr. Davis is my EF Hutton, if that makes any sense to you at all. I appreciate you, sir, and thank you for your time here. Going to miss you. Ms. Smith, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you. Anything you need, we'll help you in any way we can. Thanks for coming. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Shirey?
Thank you, sir. I would like to voice the same thing that Curtis said about Bill... I would like to voice the same thing that Curtis said about Bill English. I competed against Bill for a long time, and he was an absolute gentleman. And he tried, he tried to promote the City of Bethany as best he could, and I certainly hate to see him gone because he was a fine, fine gentleman. I would like to welcome you aboard, Mrs. Smith. I think I need to come and see you someday so we can talk and see how, how I'm supposed to act here, because it's, it's something new, and I don't want to, I don't want to get off on the wrong foot by stomping and raising. And David, for the last thirty years, you have been an absolute rock in this city for me, because if I had any possible, possible thing that I needed to know, or a counsel that I needed from you, you would always give it to me, and it was always very, very sound. And it's, I hate to see you leave as an attorney, but I think, you know, maybe somebody said that you could stay around until July, was it July, or was it?
January.
January. That would be very much appreciated, you know, give us some transition out of this. But I know how you feel, after a while, you've, you've, you've got to, you've got to slow down, and this is a, this is a major, a major job that you have to do because it's your city as well as it's everybody else's city, and you want to look after it as well as you possibly can. And I certainly hate to see you leave, but good luck.
Thanks.
Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like everyone else, everyone else has said, "Welcome, Janet. Thanks for coming onboard." David, I don't have enough words to say, but thank you for, I remember meeting your daughter. I especially remember meeting your granddaughter when she led our Pledge of Allegiance. She just had a gleam and just sparked everybody.
If she's watching tonight, she'll be back after she hears you say that.
Good, good. Have her come up here. Well, I know that you've, you've provided the city excellent guidance, legal, legal guidance over the years, and it's a long time, and we all appreciate that.
Thank you.
One more thing, I had the opportunity Saturday to go and join the, actually, it was only one member of the Parks Recreation and Tree Board, but we had a small group that got together and did a park cleanup at Don Brown Park, which included Representative Tammy West and her husband John. So, we did a, did a good cleanup out there and did what we could in the park. So, let's do more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to say welcome to our new city manager. You've been here a few days, part, part of the day, and as you can tell, we've got a lot of work to do. So, we're all excited about the goals we want to accomplish and how we're going to get there, so we're excited that you're here. And also, Mr. Davis, there are two people in this room that the first few times I sat down in this seat a little over a year ago kept me from shaking like a leaf and passing out with nerves, and that, one of them was you. And so, I want to thank you for all that you've done and the advice you've given, and so you're going to be missed, and the family of Bethany loves you, and we're glad you're a part of it, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. The other person is my wife, who is sitting right there, probably trying to find a ballgame because she's bored stiff during Tennessee Vols football season. That's what she'll be doing at the council meetings, is watching football. And she's the other person that keeps me, has kept me shaken like a leaf. And last council meeting, I epically failed, and I acknowledge that because, and I'm owning up to it right now, May first, the last council meeting was our eighth anniversary, and I failed to mention it. And so, I am acknowledging that publicly. That is the woman of my dreams and my best friend and the most beautiful woman in the world, and I'm hoping that maybe tonight I will be able to sleep inside the house after that. No, I'm just kidding, she's very gracious, and so. I have a, something that I'd like to bring up, though, before I forget, and that is in regards to semi-automated trash. I believe that rather than forcing, not that we're doing that, but hopefully not, forcing to roll out our automated trash service by a set time, that we would look at making sure we have the plan in place and that we're truly ready for it, because the citizens need to be educated with new rules and all of those things, and I think it would be wise for us to make sure, not that we just get it done, but that we get it done right. And so, I would just like to throw that out there. And I know they've been working hard trying to get stuff prepared for that, so I just wanted to make sure I had verbalized that. Item sixteen is new business. Do we have any new business? Anyone would like to bring to council?
I have something I'd like to bring up. I don't know, it kind of relates to what you were just saying. The trash cans that are out in the street and rolling around, I mean, I parked my car, went out, got one, put it along the side of the road, drove down the street, and there it was blowing again. I know we want people to bring them back right away, but they do go to work and tend to bring them back that night, and I know that the new containers will not blow as easily. But meanwhile, what can we do? What can we do to keep accidents from happening because they're being attacked by trash cans?
I think, I guess the same thing we've done for the past forty years, dodged, you know, a hundred years, dodged the cans. And be a good neighbor and pick them up and drag them out of the street and.
Watch it blow again.
Yeah, and pray that we hurry up and get our new trash cans so that they won't blow down the street, so. With no new business, other than our trash can conversation, I consider us adjourned until June fifth, 2018. With that, I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June fifth, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust, item one. A and B is consent docket. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June fifth, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one, A and B, consent docket. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June fifth, 2018, and with that, we are adjourned.